Alright, um. Let's do a roll call.
You ready?
Yeah.
Ms. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Banks.
Here. Here. Present. I said, yes, she said all of us.
Uh, did.
No.
Meschinsky.
Did you miss me?
Maybe she went out.
Uh, I'm here.
Meschinsky's here.
Meschinsky in. Full board present. Okay, can everybody please stand to the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on the God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Board's quote of ethics will be on the agenda and on the website if anybody would like to refer it. Um, and we're gonna do our executive session first. As of January fourteenth, on motion, okay? And how long do we need to take?
Probably fifteen, twenty minutes.
Um, let's say twenty minutes. Okay, so we'll be back at six twenty seven?
Did you, can you hear this?
No.
You have to speak up.
We're gonna go into executive session. Who motion?
I did.
CI motion.
Thanks.
Second.
Okay, thanks.
Can I have a roll call?
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Yon.
Yes.
Ms. Meschinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Falco.
Yes, thank you.
Roll five zero.
Alright, I apologize for moving, thank you.
Ms. Allen.
Here. 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 Here.
Present.
Present. Thank you.
Okay, so, um. First, uh, as a presentation item, and so next board meeting, we'll have to present where we, um, fall in our Q-SAC report. Um, so I'd link the, the Q-SAC report on there, um, so in the areas of, um. You know, we basically did pass everything, but obviously, uh, our instructional program, we did not pass, right? Um, which has been, uh, you know, a continuous thing. Um, so. Hold on, we're gonna get bumpers out. Um, so where we are is for. For passing, you need to have eighty percent, right? So for everything, and instructional program, we were at sixty-seven percent. Um, and again, that's because we did not show significant progress in, um, in our subject areas. For fiscal management, uh, we got a ninety-six percent, uh, for governance, we got a ninety-four percent. Operations, we got an eighty-eight percent, and personnel, we got a one hundred percent. So, um, it's the same tune every single year, we have to get our test scores up, and we all know that, okay? Um, so that is our Q-SAC information, and again, we'll reiterate this, uh, at the, at next, next week's meeting. Um, so this is very preliminary, but, um, I wanted you to have, um, the action plan for the bipartisan stronger connections grant that we, um, we received. Uh, no money has been awarded yet, but, um, we were one out of fifteen school districts in the state of New.
Did you think they were talking about this on the news?
They were.
My husband came home and is like, Janet, you've gotta have the school go out for this, uh, grant, because, you know, so much money, like they were talking about on the radio, I was like, yeah.
That's good. Um, it, it's bittersweet, in all transparency, because, um, again, it was fifteen school districts in the state of New Jersey that received the award. Um, but they received the award because i- it's based on a ranking system and a point system, and some of those points are, um, put into place due to like, um, head reports, um. Traumatic situations that happened in school, um, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed, so, uh, we have one point three eight, three eight million dollars over the next two years. Um, and then I included this action plan in here, so you can see some of the, the things that we're gonna do. Basically, you know, we have, uh, chronic absenteeism issues, uh, we need to, uh, give, provide more trauma-informed practices, restorative practices, also increase our parent engagement. So this is a four-pronged attack, um, and it's basically centered around training, because again, we had the money for two years, but, you know, we want it to sustain. We wanna sustain the practices, so there's a lot of training that our, our staff will be, um, going, uh, to do this, this school year.
And this is how we're gonna get, um, the woman that was at our administration.
Yes, so, um. Lane with her. Yeah, so, um, you know, again, if you look in the action plan.
The training, though, you also referred to for families as well, so.
Yeah, it's gonna go, it's gonna be, but yeah.
So for an example, um, we have a staff training, we'll have a staff training every month, okay? The focus will again be trauma-informed, um, restorative practices, equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging, okay? Um, so that is, that ranges from isolated professional developments on our PD days, as well as, um. Coaching that will come into classrooms and work with teachers and get practical experience. On top of that, uh, we are doing, uh, what are called boosters for our admin team, so our admin team, they're basically being trained in, uh, to be experts in restorative practices and trauma-informed approaches. And this is being brought to us by a few partners that we have, and you'll see on next week's agenda, um, I'm asking for permission to go out to RFP. Um, because we have to secure those, those partners, okay? We already have one partner, because we had, um, started partnering with them prior to receiving this grant through another grant that we had, or S R three. Um, and they're called Effective School Solutions.
And the S R three is the one we lose at the end of the year, right?
S R three is done in September twenty twenty-four.
Okay, that's nice to see that we can keep some of that things because of this.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, and just a real quick thing about Effective School Solutions, probably in September, I will have them come to a board meeting for a presentation, all of our partners. They need to be a part of, you know, the, the community, so they will be at a board meeting, um. But Effective School Solutions, they are like one of the leading providers in trauma two and trauma three interventions. Which means that we will have three clinicians in, in our school district, and these clinicians will be able to have a cohort of about ten students that are what we consider tier three students. Tier three students means that they are at risk, significant trauma, and this clinician will be able to meet with them daily basis, once a week, meet with parents. Um, so it's gonna be a, a real big boost in our mental health capacity.
Does it include the littles?
So yes, it does.
Cause I know that's our, like, I feel like that's a big thing.
So we'll have two here at Holbein, and we'll have one at Brainerd, okay? Um, the reason why we don't have one at Falwell is because, um, throughout all of this, throughout all of this, this is, this has freed up money for us to get a, um, a school social worker. The title of it is School Community Ambassador, um, but when you look at that job description, it's a social work background, and they are, they're the person that's gonna link home and school together. So with, again, with tier three, tier two students, they'll be able to do home visits, they'll be able to connect them to local resources, things like that. So, I mean, when, when, when we look at what we are coming from, we're coming from like years of not having ample, um. Opportunity for, you know, these tier two and tier three interventions. Uh, especially now with the, the, the trauma that we're seeing in our students, um, you know, none of, none of us as educators went to school for this. Um, so now we need the help of the clinicians to come in, and what we are going to call this is a trauma attuned model. And trauma attuned model means that we have attunement with everything, so it's the whole child learning, um, it's like, you know, w- we are, we will attend to their needs. So then they will feel safe enough to then focus on the tasks that we have, so. Uh, that is the, that, that's the short version of it. That's the short version of it, but I, I would say that, um, I'm excited about this, I think our administration is excited, because we, we, we struggle with a lot of things, and, I mean, we dealt with things the best that we could, but. I think now we're almost learning all over again, um, in a two-year practicum, um, of, of, of mental health strength, so. Uh, that's where we are right now, uh, and there's other pieces of this that I will be able to present later on, but I don't wanna reveal too much in the public, because show me the money. I wanna see it in our account, and then we can keep it going, but, uh, as of right now, uh, we're just waiting to see when the, the funds will be awarded, and, um, we'll just go from that point. Um. Next item that I wanted to discuss, uh, will be curriculum revisions. So, um, obviously, every year, we revise our curriculum to meet the, the, um, expectations of the state, uh, they're forever changing as well. Um, but, you know, when I first started, it was a goal of mine to go to standards-based report, report cards. Um, we started off in Brainerd, and now we're standards-based for kindergarten through fourth grade. Um, which is, uh, um, it's, it's exciting, because, um, you know, there's a, if you do the research, there's a lot of stigma with, you know, the A's, the B's, the C's, and the D's. Um, and so now this is, this is a focus on the standard, on the skills. Um, so, uh, there will be parent trainings to make sure that our parents understand, um, you know, why we made the shift and what the standards-based report card looks like, because it's a lot of reading, it's, it's different. So we'll be able to coach, uh, just how to, what things to look for, how to decipher certain things, um, and I just wanted to make that one out.
Clinicians do that, our, for parents, since they just had it for the last three years.
That is true, but some are getting it for the first time. Um, which means that Mount Holly schools work on two different, like, semester periods, right? So grades pre-K through, through four work on trimesters, and then five through eight, Holbein will work on the traditional four quarters. Okay? Um. I think eventually.
I'm just gonna keep looking at you to make sure that I'm not losing.
I'm, I'm going fast, dude. I'm going fast, dude. Like, there's documents in there, you click on the link, and you'll, you'll. Um. Obviously, our ELA, we're bringing back some, some, uh, more writing units, uh, what we found is, um, there's a direct correlation between our lack of writing and, um, state testing. And when I say that, is because state testing, um, has a lot of open-ended things, and that you have to write, um, and whether you're typing it or writing it, there's still a form, there's a format to it. So, um, we're bringing back a lot of the, um, the, the writing rubrics that we used before.
There, we do have teachers that do it, but it's not something that we make them do. Yeah, I agree. I signed your read, we can write.
Yeah, I, I. That's another, that's another debate, I guess, that we can have, um, you know, cause who knows if they're, you know, gonna have to pick up anything to write, or speak to, you know, write, they, they might get to a point in their life where they'll just be thinking.
Don't find too old to even think about that.
Progress is good. Alright, so, um, science, uh, so we're getting some, uh, we're, we're partnering with a company that we've partnered with for, gosh, like, uh. Almost ten years now, um, and they are going to provide us with, um, like, uh, experimental, um, units and science, and there's gonna be onsite science coaching with, uh, for the revised curriculum. Same as social, same as social studies. Alright, that's the summer recap.
And they're already going on in September, I believe, they're already going to, what are they, going to the M U A or something?
Uh, there's, there's so many walking trips that are already, yeah. We were supposed to go to the M U A last year in the spring, um, but there's a walking trip for M U A, there's a walking trip to, um, the, the jail. Um, just trying to bring in more of the New Jersey curriculum to the kids.
There's been a big push for local.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they, they love that jail trip, they're gonna really look at that.
Um, next item would be policies and regulations. Okay, so.
Oh my god, Rob, the amount of pages.
What you mean?
It, the policy is nineteen pages.
Which one, the current one?
Yeah, uh, both.
Oh.
Actually, the new one might.
It's only nineteen pages, cause of the, that chart, the, the graph, the chart. Um. It's smaller than the hit policy.
Well.
That's forty-eight.
Well.
Um, so, policy fifty-six hundred is our student discipline code of conduct, um, obviously, the most important part of that is actually the regulation, because that's what we do, that's what we live by, and that's how we, uh, implement discipline and code of conduct. So, um, what I did was, I showed you our current policy, so every year, you're supposed to update your code of conduct. Um, I had spoken to Janet that, um, I wasn't ready for it until, until September, but.
I was impressed that it was you.
But there's so many things that we've done over the summer, um, and that I can speak to a little bit later, um, that it was mandatory, in my opinion, to get something, uh, that will support all of those things that we were doing. Because, um, in, in all honesty, if it's not backed up by regulation or a policy, uh, quite frankly, someone does not have to do it. So, um, what I have here is, um, a working draft of regulation fifty-six hundred. Um, currently, this is out in our admin team, you might even see comments on certain things, because I think you have the same document that we have, um, so there are, um.
Send me an email, we're gonna pay that comments, yeah.
Yeah. So, so it gives you some insight of like, whoa, whoa, at least what we're thinking and how we can shape this. Um, I really would like to put this on the agenda for next week, um, so we can adopt it for, for September.
And you think the draft is ready for that?
Uh, yes, it will be by Wednesday, for sure. Um. But it, 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 we talked about being restorative, now we can be restorative, because our policy before, um, when you look at it, it was punitive, for, just for information, not sure if you know. So punitive is like, eh, you do the time, you do the crime, you do the time, right? And that still exists, but the way that it's written now is there are levels, right? So there's a level one, there's a level two, there's a level three, there's a level four, and within those levels, you have options of how you can restore the behavior of the student in their action. It doesn't mean that we're not, we're never suspending kids, it doesn't mean that we're never doing, uh, after-school detention, but it's just how those things happen are different. So like, a kid would be suspended for, let's say, three days for, let's say, a fight, and then they would come back to school, and they would just be back in school. Well, now, you know, we would have a reentry meeting, we would have a, a restorative conference to make sure that that student is accepted back into that environment without any stigma. Um, and then that goes for even after-school detentions, it's more of a reflection period, and now we have staff that we're gonna go through training, um, so they can have these re- restorative, uh, discussions with, with our students, so. Um, there's a lot of stuff that is, is, is changing in that regard. Um, so I think earlier on in the year, um, you'll have your back-to-school nights, you'll hear this from your, from the principals, but then also, we plan on having some fall sess-, some fall parent sessions, where we can talk about some of these things called restoration and trauma-informed. Um, and I'm just gonna plug already, our parent nights, I've already got nine scheduled, and I'm about to schedule about five to six more, so in some months, we'll have two parent nights, uh, well, uh, we'll have family university. Um, sometimes two nights in a week, but all of the things that we did last year, we're gonna bring back this year, um, and then some. Um. The next thing on the agenda would be discipline, and under that, I put restorative and PBIS plans. Um, I didn't link them in here, because they're still in draft form, but I will be able to link them, um, August thirtieth, uh, because we are doing a, uh, end of the summer, like, presentation culminating event. Yay, summer's done, school's about to start, yeah! And so we're gonna go through our paces and present to one another as an admin team, just to get that final feedback, so those things will be done. Um, and, you know, I talked about restorative, uh, plans already, PBIS plans, um. You know, we, we have been a PBIS district for some time, um, obviously, like, when the pandemic hit, we've, that, that kinda stopped, but we've picked it up. East School does a phenomenal job with their PBIS, but one of the things that we recognize is, a lot of PBIS is, is rewards, but it's also prevention. And we're focusing on not only the rewards, but the prevention this year, so there's a lot of, in the restorative and PBIS plans, every school has a list, this is what a PBIS classroom looks like. So every school will have those, I mean, every class will have those components, age-appropriate, eh, but every classroom in a school will have this environment that we're trying to set. Um, and then lastly, well, not lastly, I guess next, cause I'm looking, there's other things on there. Um, next would be, um, strategic planning, um, and district goals, so I linked the district goals on there, um, I think you had access to this previously. Um, but, you know, we, we haven't changed with that. One thing I do wanna plug is that currently, our team is using a, a software called Monday dot com, I don't know if any of you have heard of it, but Monday, like, tracks all of our, our, um, our goals. So it's a platform that we can use to communicate with one another, that can send reminders, emails, people finish their goals, they hit done, um, like, they get an email that says, yippee, you're blessed. Uh, so we're, we're doing that, and, um, I, I got enough licenses for the board to use that.
Oh, we did ask, we raised our hand, and you're like, cause I wanna do the tracking, and then.
Yeah. Yes. So, so, so. We'll, we'll have, we'll have that for the board too, and then we can, one, one day, we can do a training on that, maybe at a work session. At a work session, so you guys can see the, the different components of it, but so far, it's been great, um, and so we just set a reminder, um, once a week to look at that, and make sure you check your notes that are in there and things like that, so it, it's pretty awesome.
Cause once we set up the core goals, then if I get a log, then I can start sending it out.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Oh, I know, she's the one that asks, do this, yeah. Um.
Alright, so, our, our next discussion, that, that may be a little longer than, than my wing, um. Janet and I met to formalize the, uh, board goals, okay?
I threw my comments in, sorry, I didn't go back anything in the last, but I'm tired.
Okay, alright, so, there are some, we have some action steps, we didn't know if you thought of more action steps that you wanted to add, or wanted to tweak, but we have to identify the persons that are going to. We did not, that was for committees.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Jesus.
So, so, so we have to come up with that, um.
Wanna go step-by-step for start with committee?
Sure. Well, committee is done for goal one. So, goal two.
Well, I just wanna make sure everybody's big with what it says for goal one. So goal one is by the end of the school year, each board member will have a log of at least five contact points with MHTSD administrations. That's also a recording number, right?
I know, well, I know, I already said, I'm, I'm, yeah, 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 I'm saying it like that.
Um. If any, I just want to know if anybody has any questions about the different things. Maybe just put on something that could be put on. I think it's mainly just you and me, right?
Yes. Well, it's, cause we have said.
CI is on the left. You are on the joint admin team for school, both groups, two board, board members at a time.
I wanna join that one too.
The last one?
Schoolwork.
Well, I thought all five of us.
Yeah, but there's only. Oh, these are the lead.
The lead.
Okay, okay, I got you.
We'll, we'll put you on a schedule, but.
Yeah, all of us will be, okay.
I figure.
I'm gonna need monthly with.
Since there's only gonna be.
Sorry, I just messed up.
Three, cause it's, eh, one, one per trimester, so there's three.
What, walkers?
Yes.
I was gonna be more than three.
Not for us.
Oh.
I'm gonna use some of my days off, cause I'm off different days than you guys.
Well, I was just thinking, because there's five of us, so I thought each of you, I'd all go once, but each of you can go twice, cause I feel like I've.
It depends on my schedule.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, I was just thinking, cause I'm, I'm here more than you guys are.
I'm definitely coming tomorrow, I will try to come to do, yes.
Yeah, just let me know.
I think the speakers are scheduled.
They should be scheduled for the end of advance, right, Rob?
Um, they can be, but. We haven't scheduled them yet, but.
Okay, so goal two, by the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the board will have led two family affinity group sessions. So then, in the action items for that, we put, first action item would be research, what are two largest affinity groups are?
Oh, what hours are.
What hour of, like, with the districts?
Yeah.
Who wants to be there?
Okay, so here's my question, where, where's, I guess, wouldn't the admins have? The, um.
The data.
The data, thank you, the data.
We're already on the, we're on the nurses and.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't that already be there, we can just go and have a conversation with the. Shouldn't your admin already have that data, right, and we can have?
I don't think it's compiled.
Um. This is, this is, uh, this is my need for clarification, I need to learn more about the affinity groups, okay? So like, I, I would need to know, like, what information you're seeking for me to say yes or no.
Gotcha. Sure. I'll be on that one.
You're talking.
I'm talking.
Yeah, I just moved it down.
One person touches something, it changes on everybody's.
I'm gonna put, um, myself on this. Anybody else? Wanna be a part of that process?
I will.
Okay.
We can have chats with the others.
Well, everybody's gonna be involved, it's just the people that make it happen.
Right, yeah.
And when should we have it done back, we put ten thirty minutes to go back, it's good?
Well, yeah, and find out what it is, I'll have more data, and then we can.
Oh, someone just deleted it.
I didn't touch it.
You see where my hands are, right?
I definitely did it.
It was me, wasn't it? I was just trying to move down.
Don't, don't say no touchy! The kids were clear! You should learn from yourself.
From your speech.
We're gonna do that.
So the next one is, uh, reach out to staff members, they would be, of greatest help in reaching out to the two affinity groups, and get together with them to plan a family night, um, for the, for those two affinity groups.
Can we establish that after?
I feel like it's hard to establish.
Yeah, cause we're gonna, how are we gonna ask, like. Yeah, we need to access it based off of the ten thirty one.
The only one I know who's sure it's gonna be on is Mago.
Yeah, he's about to.
Yeah.
He's our link to the.
I'm on everything.
And then host the affinity group, that should be the full board.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not even gonna scroll down.
Don't touch. Just look.
Uh, so there was a, a, a host, uh, affinity group B, I put board, Mago, um. So Brianna, you had a note in our original. So Brianna, you had a note in our original thing, you said by December twenty twenty-three, gather feedback from school community on parent affinity groups. Use school functions and committee, uh, and community. So I guess the question is, these action steps, does that reflect what you wanted there?
Yes and no, so once we determine what the largest affinity groups are, then like, let's not, my point was, let's not create a program. For students or parents, families that that they're, that doesn't resonate with them.
Yeah.
So let's check in with them, so we determine, it's almost a process, we determine who those largest affinity affinity groups are. Then maybe at one of the family universities, whatever, we propose the idea, what are some thoughts, whatever. And then we can go out to the the staff as well to then sort of gather their thoughts and feedback. So it's more like the community um, touch point to make sure that we have their um, sort of their buy-in before we just go do something that. Won't be effective.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
So you said no, yes and no, that you covered the yes, what's the no?
We covered the yes because we said, we'll, we'll determine who those affinity groups are, what we didn't cover is where we'll get that feedback. And maybe it's in that second step, where we say, reach out to the staff members, but at that point, it's staff and community.
So you think there should be a step between find out what the affinity groups are and reach out to staff, you think they're.
Or this second one simultaneously, like we're reaching out to staff and community is sort of like the the feedback.
So we could add.
We just need a way to. Exactly.
But once we hit the connection, right, we're good.
Right, we're probably going to.
And are the affinity groups even going to be at family nights, because the whole point of this is they don't show up.
Right, but this is why I'm saying if we, like, they come to like a back to school night, whatever, like in the beginning of the year, we say. Hey, here's um, some affinity groups that we're thinking about. Are you interested, right, so, yeah, what would you like to see, get their feedback, so then when we do host them, then they're a candidate.
I would say that fits under the research, maybe there should be like steps in that of like. Like, I love what you just said, that at the back to school nights, you would do something like that, right? There would also be like, so I'm saying there could be step, for eh, for the first one, there could be a a B C. One of them could be talking to communities at back to school nights, another one could do a survey.
Yep. We could even do like a, you know, a monster, like with a QR code. Agree that, and this way you get, maybe a certain name to it, or anything like that, they just, and by the smell, we can compile that.
Alright, well, we can determine that and then we'll put it for the magic.
Okay, okay.
So um, when I read your notes, I took them in a different way, but the way that I took them. Yes, but the way that I took your notes is something that I fell strongly about too. I I took it as a, you want this to be an ongoing situation, not just the this year situation.
Absolutely.
So I thought that we could add an action bottom that's had something about a future plan. Like, how do we make this part of the district year after year after year? And Rob and I were discussing, is this a strategic plan, dog process, like? So I just never thought of that.
Would have to pass off to the district for year by year, yeah, and then the strategic plans coming up, we should put them in there.
So just make sure it's in the strategic plan.
I do think we should use this year as like the pilot year.
So we don't need to add another action item, we should make sure that we're doing.
Exactly, yeah, agreed.
Not changing anything on this round.
Okay, so policy, create a list of which policies will, uh, we will review this year based on board and district goals. Um, that is me, and who's our policy person?
Oh, yeah, she's, she wanted that.
No, you switched.
Yeah.
Yeah, you switched.
This, I got it right here.
Good, because I have, I added that to the agenda today, cause I I wanted to talk about. Okay, uh, the next one is create timeline to achieve uh, policy reviews. Um. Then I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put Mongo Banks default.
Obviously, asking, can you handle, do we need many in this amount?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's it's good that we're basing it on the uh, board goals and district goals, because then we can look at the. And then we can come up with ranges. Yeah, I've I've been working with Lauren to try to, um, okay, so one process that we're doing now is. We're keeping log of when we are changing things. So now we'll have at the end of each year, all the policies we changed in that year and the date of when they were approved. Um, and then the other thing I I I have her trying to research is how we can um. Search Strauss Esme for all the ones that, you know, we haven't approved in like.
Yeah, like there should be by need.
But right now, they're like, they're saying that they they can't do it, so.
So this is why I had Lauren send everybody your um, your login password for the first drops Esme, so that, you know, you can all jump in and start.
And the next step was final approval of set one policy review, um. I think that that kinda goes with the timeline.
And that's, you know, the whole board, obviously.
We have company, must be nice. Um, create a plan for ongoing policy review to go along with the strategic plan, so similar to that. So I'm putting board and. Okay, I'm moving the lights more on. Develop focus area for board PD for the year.
That has to be all of us, we all have to decide.
Research how and where PD can be achieved. Uh, create calendar of board PD. Create Google platform where board members can log the PDs.
I don't really like the Google platform or whatever.
I can put machine scan there, alright, can I just give you a little vision, cause that's kinda like what I thought of. So like, let's start to create a uh, a warehouse where like, so when we go to um, school boards or any other PDs. Like, we can just start to summarize some of the events that we go to.
I started to create something last year, like forms that dumped into like sheets and things like that, that you have your comment, what you took.
Flows into the next work goal.
So that just says, uh, come, come up with a way to make this uh, an ongoing thing that coincides. We were not word smithing that day, I think this was done at like a a three thirty.
Literally the day before I left for vacation.
So I I will, I will, uh, I I'll I'll fix that up before this gets live. Um, but you know, since same, it's it's in the same vein as the last one of all the other ones, just to make sure that we're creating process.
No, I wanted the process as board members constantly change and things, but that was very poorly continuing my process here.
So you're gonna love the next one.
Alright, so governance, uh, organize the layout of a digital portfolio, rough draft, so.
That sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, this whole thing sounds like a gen thing.
Terrible idea.
Although I I, this second one is a B thing. Or B and Brianna.
Oh, the bylaws, cause it's like to the policy, yeah, definitely.
There's, what did I say, there's like seventy-five of them or something like that. A lot of them are just, this is the law.
Right.
Review and identify which bylaws need to be revised. I'm gonna put, uh. Let's put Alan on that too. I think she's playing Candy Crush. I'm like, okay, someone's got Wordle today.
I was like, I'll just like, you know, kinda go behind where.
I'm I'm putting you on there. Uh, board approval for for all bylaws.
With the rep, with the county. In communications.
Um, it says create digital portfolio and Google, that's a repeat. And that's it. So the next step is um, looking at this and this could be um, a collaborative effort. Or I can just start plugging in metrics for these things. Uh, because obviously, we wanna make sure that we um, reach our our goals and um, follow through on these. But as we get the the Monday setup, we'll be able to put metrics in there.
I I wanna approve districts and board goals next month, so.
Okay.
So our word smithers, you can hop in there.
Yes, I will hop in there and make it sound nice.
Alright, so we want to approve board and district? Alright, um, so that's that, next item, um. Community relations, nothing under that right now, um, board communications, I put, um, I don't. Do we have typed out who's doing the board committee?
Yes, not, I mean.
Yes.
We could call it typed out. You can have this, I'm just gonna say who's the, who it is, and I'm gonna hand you this, so you can.
Type it out.
Whatever you would know, it's typed out, obviously, it's typed out, it's in the.
I know, that's not, that's not enough for me, that's not enough for me, because this is why, because. I need to know who the admin is, and I need to make sure that the admin know.
Yeah, so we've already been in contact with, with Janine.
On the education part, right.
Jen, um, you have, um. But I think that she's just doing, um, Yvonne, eh, do we still have Yvonne?
She's actually home now from from early.
Yvonne, you have to email Jen. Yeah, email me.
I'm I'm gonna, and what I'm gonna do is I'll send it out in a whole thing. I'll put people's emails, so they know.
Yeah, and then it, and it's um, um, you took that step, you have communications, which is the PTA, PTO liaison. Professional development, um, trying to help you with. No, and personnel, so like, that's you, so whenever you have personnel issues, you talk to them.
Is that, uh, are the descriptions there?
Yes, I'm gonna, I just, it's also in your Google.
I looked and it wasn't there.
And then I have governance, which is, um, I'm the N A S B R F, um, I'm gonna keep track of board district goals. And if she planned on that process, and then Brianna is policies and regulations.
Okay. Um, I mean, the last thing for discussion, normally we go over anything that is on the agenda. For next week, um, I'm open to having people review it and send me questions if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, I think it's a good request, the only question I had. I reserve the opinion, the uh, ability to ask more questions.
Sure. Granted.
So if we finish all of that.
That's it.
Okay, then I'm gonna, if you guys have anything you have to wanna ask or. Yes, man.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, Yvonne, I just need to make sure that you can hear her, can you just tell us your name and address?
To speak up. Andrea Clodges, one forty Hickory Street. And I just had a question about, um. Like the the food in the cafeteria, my daughter was recently diagnosed with celiac. And I've been told that there's no gluten-free options for her at school. So I wanted to know, like, it's not even like, it's just an allergy or she wants to be healthy, it's a legit medical thing. And, you know, I don't mind packing a lunch for her, but she likes to buy lunch. And, you know, it's easier cause she loses her lunchbox all the time, so. So it's easier to just have her buy lunch, so, but there's no, there's no option for her.
Right.
So I wanted to know, like, what can I do about that?
You're doing it right now. Um, so Rob, can you look into that, because I know, I have a friend who just was diagnosed with celiac. It can be as insane as the salad dressing can have it in it.
Yeah, and it, the also, just the the contamination also. There needs to be like, it was my first time actually tonight, going into the actual kitchen back there and snooping around while you guys are talking. And, you know, it, there needs to just be one small section that's just for preparing gluten food, because it cannot. Like, if a packaging is opened, it can't be with gluten food. So I know it's a lot with the cross-contamination, and I know gluten-free food is like, super expensive. But it's also not her fault, but she has this.
Can you do me a favor, can you email me and just say like, you know, what her needs are? So I can be specific when I speak to the the um, food company.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So she actually ju- doesn't have, like I, she literally just got diagnosed, so she has her first appointment with a dietitian. On Friday, so once I speak with the dietitian and all that, I can let you know exactly, you know.
That's perfect, I appreciate it.
Let her know, oh, it's not lost, gluten-free cake is delicious.
We just might, we've, we've tried the um, gluten-free Oreos, she was very happy with that, yeah.
Uh, Lewis Lopez Lopez Tri, five on the corner. I just wanna know if there gonna be a lot of improvement for the ESL program?
That's other improvement?
Yeah, more improvement for ESL.
Um, I mean, I don't know specifically like what you would be referring to.
More improvement from the last year?
Yeah, well, you know what, I think every year the ESL um, program advances. I will say this, um, we always provide like a good program for ESL students, but we're, we are putting in more for our ESL parents. So like, our our parents that are um, um, English as a second language uh, family, you know. Or non-speaking, eh, non-English speaking, um, you know, we're gonna provide more opportunity for them. So like, as part of that grant that I was talking about, uh, we have another community ambassador, but it it'll be two bilingual community ambassadors. So anytime, eh, I don't know if you were aware, but like, last year we did a um, a night for non-English speaking families.
We did too.
And um, it was, it was, it was good, like, every family had their own translator, so we'll do more of that. Um, but I can't say that, um, you know, we're adding anything different to our ESL program. Because, you know, we move kids out every year, so I think we did a good job.
Right, and Lewis, and that's kind of part of what the the board's goal, when we talk about affinity groups, that could be one of the affinity groups that we're trying to target. To see what their needs are, to not only help kids, but help the families too, so that's one of our goals.
Okay, that's so good to know, and uh, are you gonna go beyond English and Spanish?
Absolutely.
For sure, yeah, yes. Yes.
Yeah, like some of the kids who want, really wanna learn a different language, even at the middle school.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Are you talking about learning?
Yeah, learning.
So world languages?
Yeah.
Um, I'll say this. Nation is experiencing a teacher shortage. It's hard enough to get a world language teacher in general. I don't know if you are aware of this, but we tried to do uh Spanish uh world language at the elementary level, couldn't find anyone, so we did American Sign Language. Um but.
Which turns out to be amazing because we actually have a student that is deaf.
Yeah.
So she talks to her peers now, so.
I love that ASL.
In the program.
Yeah.
Um but there will be more consideration for the other languages that we have, you know, like unfortunately, it's hard to find people that speak native languages, um like we have a growing population of Portug- Portuguese speaking families. Um you know, we have.
That's our highest, isn't it? Portuguese is our.
Not right now, but it's it's getting there. Um.
This will be a community group, do they want to call it?
Yeah. So it it's just on our radar.
So is everybody ready for the beginning of the school year?
Check.
Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
Do we have a choice? We'll be ready.
The parents are ready.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I have, good question.
Alright, thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought of one more thing that I wanted to. Um when you're talking about the clinicians that are gonna come into the school and everything, um I guess the first question is like who exactly not diagnoses, but says that like a student is a tier three student. And then a follow-up question would be what happens if there are so many tier three students that there aren't enough clinicians to move around?
Well, that's a great question. Uh the the answer to your first question is uh the clinician actually will do the intake, right? So they'll do, um so the process is, so we have three levels. We have a tier one, we have tier two, we have tier three. So most of those kids that, we have different criterias for those, right? Whether it's uh, you know, the teacher sees that uh their school avoidance issues or um a change in attitude. So they'll make um the guidance counselor aware. Then the guidance counselor will have some groups, right? So that's like more of that tier three, I mean tier one, tier almost tier two, right? And then after that, there will be um, they'll go through the I N R S process. And then through the I N R S process, one of the things that will come out is let's put this kid on a list for a clinician to do almost like an intake with that student. Um so sometimes that intake will, and it this hasn't happened yet, but this is like how the company explained this process. Sometimes the clinician will find out, yes, we can provide services for that student here. And sometimes the s- the services go beyond what we can do here in the school. So that's that's when like a school so- social worker will then jump in and tie them to outside agencies, right? Um so um there is criteria that in look fours for a student through throughout that continuum. Um but we will have someone that is trained and licensed to have that conversation with that student, so they can determine what's the best fit for that, for that need, okay? The second question, you said what if we have too many students that have identified at tier three? Hopefully that's not our problem.
Yeah.
Uh because, yeah, cause when you.
I don't know how many kids are.
Yeah, well, I think, I think when you look at the the like a traditional like tier triangle, you're talking about like uh one to five percent of your population should be that tier three, right?
Okay.
And if we have more than that, obviously, we'll have to dump our resources into providing, you know, what they need.
Right.
Um so that that is to be s- to to be determined, you know, uh we'll see. But um I think that, you know, w- we're basically going from two guidance counselors in every building, well, six guidance counselors in the in in the district that were like our mental health like captains, to now six guidance counselors in the district, three clinicians and another social worker beyond the child study team, social workers who are working with kids that have I E Ps.
Right.
So we have three of them, um we're adding another one, so um this it's, we we have mental health providers that can come together and figure out a a plan for those kids. But I I I'm hoping that that's not the case.
I'm glad that you guys are doing that, cause obviously after a rough year, um my daughter started therapy with everything going on, so it's good to know that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And 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 to be honest with you, like it it will take, you know, the word on the street for it it doesn't just start with our students. Like, we're providing a lot for our parents because i- in the the way that things are going now, our parents need to be equipped with different skills, just like our teachers, right?
Yeah.
And and they need to be aware of some of these things that are happening, so they can see the signs and understand that there's no stigma to any mi- mental health, any traumat- uh traumatization that they've gone through. But, you know, we have to get a a whole community of people to speak up about these things, so we can deal with the issues that we have. And um you know, we we have a lot of professionals here, um you know, I look at the data for Carisalis and we have like a distinct group of people that that use Carisalis for um to 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 try to seek some mental health help. Um and we know that there's more than just that group that needs it. Um and then we have data that will say, you know, what percentage of people will actually follow through. You know, sometimes that phone call goes out to them, a- as we found like fifteen providers. The next step is either you have to call them or we we will work as the concierge for that, but we need you on the line.
Right.
That's the next step. Some people don't wanna take that next step, so um.
Ms. Conberry is the one that hooked us up with whatever the third party is that you guys use to help us find the therapist that we have for my daughter, so.
But we also need you guys to like put the word out there that that we're doing these things and get people to come to these.
So if they need them.
We ju- we need your help to do that. I mean, we can, we're doing what we can, we're putting it out there and do, but I mean, you know, we're a small team.
Yeah.
We gotta just spread it. You know, and get those t- those ten people to spread it, those ten, then it can really help that community.
Any other questions?
Those are great questions. I really appreciate them. Um, all right, um.
No, I think we're good.
We'll count on you next time.
Um, who have a motion to turn?
Motion?
Second.
Alan second.
Seattle's motion.
Did you get that?
Uh yeah, Seattle.
Yep.
Yep.
Along favorite?
Alright. Alright, you're fine, thank you.
Thank you.